No, 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 we're good, we're good.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Will everyone please rise for the invocation to be delivered by Pastor Moore?
Let's pray together. Lord God, as we come before you tonight, we are grateful for the many ways that we have been blessed. And in these days when we celebrate family and friends, we pray we would always be grateful and faithful and serve others well. We do pray especially tonight for those who do not have enough, that you would be their aid and help. We're thankful for this time and this place. We ask that the service rendered tonight would result in the good to many. We thank you for it. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by legislator McDonald.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. But this is a time I would like to ask County Major Rory Flum to join me in the wall for some presentations to longtime employees of our Purchasing and Finance Departments.
Yeah, nice. So again, we thank everybody for coming tonight. This is another part of our very successful PIN program. We're celebrating every month employees throughout county government. And tonight we have our Finance Department and Sandy from Purchasing. So we'll start with Claudia. So Claudia, rumor was you started out at Glendale many years ago. We won't say how long ago, but many moons ago. But Claudia's been with us for 30 years. And Claudia, we appreciate your service. And we'd like to give you that PIN and recognition of that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Then we have Susan. She's a wonder when we have random folks coming into our building with video cameras. She says the exact right things. No, but in all, what's that? In all seriousness, she's been with our Finance Department her entire career, her entire 30 career here. So you've seen many Finance Directors come and go, many county managers come and go. You see them to be a steady, very pleasant presence down there. So we all appreciate that very much. So congratulations on your 30 years. Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, we have Sandy Tomico from our Purchasing Department. And Sandy, I have your original application on file. And I think there's been an error here because there's no way you've been working here longer than I've been alive. That just can't be possible. That can't be possible. I think we're going to go with an error. We're going to go in there.
Say that again.
It said it would make me younger.
It would, it would. So much so that Tommy wanted to say a couple of words in support of you.
Yes. Thank you. On mine. My name is Tom Belik. I'm the purchasing agent. Sandy Tomico does not need an introduction as she has been working for Schenectady County for 55 years. So she knows everybody. Back in 1967, Lyndon Johnson was president, Nelson Rockefeller was governor of New York State, and Queen Elizabeth had already been the monarch for more than 10 years. Sandy's first assignment in her career with the county was working for the clerk of the legislature. Shortly after that, she transferred to the Civil Service Department. By the 1970s, Sandy was fully ensconced at the county auditor, who was responsible for the copy and mailroom at the time. In 1995, purchasing took over the mailroom, mail and copy room. She reports that many weeks they would produce tens of thousands of forms on the mimeograph machine for the Department of Social Services and others. Sandy told me some other interesting things about the mailroom, such as that the current mailroom used to be a holding cell and a bathroom for the occasional prisoner waiting for his or her court appearance.
When they were remodeling the building, the building, the courthouse, where they were remodeling things, was there a bathroom or a holding cell?
Yes. Sandy is one of the hardest working people in the county. I can always count on her to be the first person at work in the morning, which is true, and one of the last to leave in the afternoon. Sandy certainly deserves recognition for her many years of service, and I am happy to be joined by her colleagues at this special ceremony. Thank you.
Sandy, would you like to say a few words?
Yes. I wanted to thank everyone over the years for their support, cooperation. We have a wonderful staff here for so many years, and I really appreciate it. I wouldn't be able to have gone this far if it wasn't for that. I appreciate everybody's help over the years. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Please take this small, small token of our appreciation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, this is beautiful. Oh, my gosh. There's a pin. I've been waiting to get that yours.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Better go to a commercial.
Once again, thank you all for your dedicated service to our residents of Schenectady County. Well, now move to our Legislative Conference and Rules Committee to be Chair, legislature Fields.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one item on the rules agenda, Rules Number 87. It's a resolution to authorize the county manager to enter into an extension of a lease agreement with Bruce Tansky. Bruce Tansky is over at the Schenectady County Airport, and they're just looking to have a lease that would go till 2029. Senator McDowell, second, Mr. Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bearing none, this resolution's been moved. And with that, Mr. Chair, the Rules Committee will come to a close.
Thank you, legislature Fields. It's now time to open up privilege of the floor. Any members of the public wishing to speak during privilege of the floor, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak during privilege of the floor? Anyone wishing to speak during privilege of the floor? Anyone wishing to speak during privilege of the floor? Seeing now, seeing none, privilege of the floor is now closed, and we'll now call toward the December meeting of the county legislature. The clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Present.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Present.
Mr. McGill?
Present.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Here.
Mr. Frisone?
Here.
Mr. Cuomo?
Here.
Mr. Paterno?
Present.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Here.
Ms. Valano?
Here.
Mr. Hess?
Present.
Mr. Hughes?
Present.
Mr. McDonald?
Here.
Mr. Jazinski?
Present.
Thirteen present, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. Members, she copies of the minutes from the meeting held on November 9th. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are hereby adopted. Clerk will read the list of reports received.
We've received reports from the Commissioner of Finance, Department awaits measures, and the county clerk.
Thank you. Under Committee reports, legislature Hughes, reports from the Committee on Economic Development and Planning.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning met on December 5th and reported to the agenda Resolution 192.
Thank you, sir. Legislature Pratt, reports from the Committee on Education and Libraries.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Education and Libraries met on December 5th, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolution 193.
Thank you. legislature Osterlich with reports from the Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services.
Mr. Chair, the Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services met on December 5th, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 194, 195, and 196.
Thank you. legislature Paterno reports from the Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation, and Infrastructure.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation, and Infrastructure met on December 5th, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolution 197.
Thank you. legislature Gata reports from the Committee on Tourism, Arts, and Special Events.
Thank you, sir. The Committee on Tourism, Arts, and Special Events met on December 5th, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolution 198.
Thank you. legislature Fields reports on the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Rules met earlier this evening and reported to the agenda Resolutions 191.
Thank you, sir. Also, the Committee on Ways and Means.
And the Committee on Ways and Means met on December 5th, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 197, 198, 199, 200, 201, and 202.
Thank you, sir. Our first item this evening is Resolution 191-22. Sponsors of Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into an extension of a lease agreement with Bruce Tansky.
Any discussion? See, no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 192-22. Sponsors, legislature Hughes, the clerk will read.
Resolution regarding the conveyance of an easement to Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation and Verizon New York Inc.
Any discussion? legislature Hughes.
We discussed this in committee last week, but the purpose of this easement is to enable the air guard to build a simulator, a C-130 simulator, which will be used not only for the planes at our airport in Schenectady, but also the rest of the C-130 fleet. So it's significant. We remind people we have about 1,000 jobs out there, and the more infrastructure that we can convince the Defense Department to locate here, the better chance we have of retaining those tails in the event that we run into a base realignment situation down the road. So I appreciate everyone's support for this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See, no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 193-22. Sponsors, legislature Pratt, the clerk will read.
Resolution adopting a revised operational budget for SUNY Schenectady to serve the operational needs for the period September 1, 2022, to August 31st, 2023.
Any discussion? See, no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill? Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 194-22. Sponsors, legislature Osterlich, the clerk will read.
Resolution to accept monies from the New York State Department of Health for the childhood-led poisoning prevention program.
Any discussion? See, no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 195-22. Sponsors, legislature Osterlich, the clerk will read.
Resolution confirming the appointment of a person to the position of Director of Public Health Services.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Sir, ma'am.
It is my pleasure to sponsor this today. I will say, Mr. Brown has been a qualified, certainly for this job, a strong leader and excellent communicator, and he's led us through one of the most difficult phases that I think our county has known to date. So I hope that my colleagues will join me in supporting this motion and appoint Mr. Brown to this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? legislature Fields.
Just like the second Mrs. Osterlich's comments about Mr. Brown, I can also like to add, it's not just the difficult moments that which he had shone during the COVID experience. And I can tell you that from my side of the world, he did so much with the community and so much in Schenectady City itself, and also reaching out and making sure that all these collaborations between the religious community and also just the people at a whole were able to get the resources necessary to fight against COVID. And I just want to thank him for his service and his enthusiasm, and he's promptly returning the phone calls and all this work that he's done. His family is here, and so we appreciate his good work. And thank you for, you have a good husband, a good father, and I guess that must be a parent, right? Good son.
Thank you. Any further discussion? legislature Hughes.
Frequently when we appoint someone, we, you know, in the back of our mind, we go, okay, well, they look good on paper, and hopefully they're going to be an exceptional candidate. In this particular individual, we have someone who has done a trial by fire here during what legislature Osterlich, I think, referred to as, and I totally agree, one of the most serious public health challenges of the last century, and came through it with exceptional alacrity and aplomb. And I'm convinced that we have the right leader for our Health Department going forward. And I anticipate the challenges that we see in public health are going to continue. We may just not know the style or the effect of what those will be, but I think we can be confident that we have the right leader.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See, no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. I see Mr. Brown in the audience. Congratulations, sir. Would you like to introduce your family?
My wife, Jen, my son, Ian, my mother, Arlene, and my brother, Jack. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 196-22. Sponsors, legislature Osterlich, the clerk will read.
Resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the New York State Office for the aging.
Any discussion? See, no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 197-22. Sponsors, legislature Paterno, the clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into a contract for the purchase and sale of certain real property.
Any discussion? See, no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill? Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Next item is Resolution 198-22. Sponsors, legislature Gata, the clerk will read.
Resolution regarding the designation of a tourism promotion A resolution regarding the designation of a tourism promotion agency for Schenectady County.
Any discussion? Legislative Gata.
Thank you, sir. This resolution designates our Convention and Visitors Bureau, also known as Discover Schenectady, as our tourism promotion agency. And I just want to thank our executive director of Discover Schenectady, Todd Garofano, and his team, Bree and Alyssa, and also Donna Pennell, who's our film commissioner for Film Schenectady, and they're doing such a great job getting the word out about all of Schenectady County, and I hope I can -- everyone will support this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? CNNO, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 189-22. Sponsors, Legislative Fields. The clerk will read.
A resolution approving the report of form and footing and adopting the tax apportionment basis.
Any discussion? CNNO, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 200-22. Sponsors, Legislative Fields. The clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the extension of returned school taxes on the applicable town tax rolls.
Any discussion? CNNO, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 201-22. Sponsors, Legislative Fields. The clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the extension of returned village taxes on the applicable town tax rolls.
Any discussion? CNNO, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 202-22. Sponsors, Legislative Fields. The clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing an agreement with UHY LLP for independent auditing services.
Any discussion? CNNO, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo's absent. Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused. Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frisone?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterno?
Aye.
Ms. Osvaldo?
Yes.
Ms. Valano?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Thirteen aye, one absent, one excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. In order to conclude our meeting, and just on behalf of all of us in the county legislature, we'd like to wish all of our constituents and residents a very safe, happy, and healthy holiday season. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Aye.
Let your state just adjourn. Thank you all.